You ready?
We're ready. The speed is cold.
Too much motion to accept the minutes in the last meeting. Thank you.
Make a motion to accept the minutes.
As required. On six eleven.
Okay.
As required on six eleven.
Second.
Okay, well, say hi.
Hi.
Just to report the minutes. Did we appoint Ms. Clancy, Sharon Clancy, to the Economic Development Committee?
I believe, yes.
Okay. And I can assign this. And that was voted on what date was it?
Six eleven.
Is that the sign? Is that the sign?
Must be the signs.
Yeah. Is that for Fit Factory?
Oh, yes, John. We have it. Better than a quarry.
You're gonna have, with me here, yes.
Except for Fit Factory.
Yes. Could you look at that?
Yes, we did when we approved it last week.
Okay. So now we, oh, it was signed by Tim Wheeler.
Yes.
Okay, that's good. And he gave a copy to the, do you want me to get a copy to the Land Inspector?
That, I'm not sure. But yes, he did, he voted and he sent it. And we checked the, um, yep, exactly.
Did he mail, did he mail a copy back to?
I don't know.
You wanna say something?
I can't find language.
It's not scheduled to open until the end of the summer. Right?
The one I know is too easily rotated.
It's about into the summer.
Yeah.
When's the liquor store coming in?
There's still an issue with that.
What is the issue?
I guess there's a court battle over the issuing of the license.
Oh, okay. Beyond us.
Yep.
Good. Do you, uh, offhand, on the subdivision, how much time do we give the other groups to comment? Is it forty, twenty days or thirty days?
Have to approve.
Yeah, for them to come back and give us comments on the points.
The whole process is ninety days. After we accept.
Yeah, but we have to. Yeah, we have to. I'll look it up.
Is this a private meeting? Because I can't.
I thought, I was, as you know, what the subdivision control or how long the other committees and groups have to answer back to us is their comments. Since June seventh, it's gotta be at least thirty days.
We accepted it on the eleventh, so we're not worried after that.
Okay.
That's the subdivision on Bigelow.
Oh, yeah, okay.
So we've, it's been distributed to the Bullets. And Scott's got a copy of it and he's reviewing it.
When is he coming back, in first or July?
Um, he didn't say. He was a little busy, he said, but I can't imagine it's gonna take him that long.
We don't, we don't need till when they.
In July.
A week, a week from next week. Two weeks from now.
Yeah.
Two weeks from now?
Right.
That's when that comes out then?
The second Tuesday in July is.
Two weeks from now, huh?
Two weeks from now.
Oh, that came quickly.
Tim isn't coming tonight?
No.
He said his brother's in the hospital.
Oh, God.
So I'll do mine.
Yeah. Two days after my mother's hundred and tenth birthday. That's the one you wear when you don't want people to shoot you.
This is here, he's taking care of it.
Are you caught up?
There's an application instructions to deploy for what? For Board of Appeals, thank you. You'll have to do it again.
Is he, is Dickie in Boston?
I don't know. I don't know if he didn't say.
Is he? I have a friend that's in there, it's almost gone.
Is that for? Yep, that's.
Were they in here?
Yeah, they came in and showed us that sign.
Yeah.
You're always beautiful. I don't think we took any action on it. Hold on, hold on.
Yeah, I just heard yesterday. She was a cousin to Helen.
Yeah, well, they just made a presentation on it. And so. Yeah, no, we did. We took a vote on it.
Yeah?
Yep. We voted in favor as it was presented to us.
Okay. It meets the. So this, this should go on the plans for the Overley District. I'm gonna think. Who else does it get recorded? Because that's probably the Overley District.
Right.
All right, so we have, we have all the other signs.
What are you looking at?
On the plans for the Overley District.
Oh, work.
That doesn't answer it.
Fire, um, the Fit Factory.
The what?
Fit Factory, the new exercise gym.
Oh, yeah.
They just submitted their fire alarm plan, so trying to get caught up.
I figure I'm not paying in another gym. I was sign up and then I don't go. And I use all my money.
They love people like you. They love people like you.
I know it. Especially when you put them on automatic and they go, oh, my God. So I said to my brother, I was gonna buy a Max Trainer or something. I said, because then I don't have an excuse. It's too late. It's two something or other. I can just go down. He said, that's where I keep, he said mine, in the basement. He, he works out every day.
You gotta be dedicated to go downstairs then.
Huh?
You gotta be dedicated to go downstairs then.
Mine will go downstairs because I have a dead cell. I think it's seeping out through everything. What are we doing tonight anyhow?
Old business and new business.
According to the agenda on the website, we're doing old business and new business.
Yeah.
Are we gonna get moving or what?
Yeah, we are moving. We're moving already.
Well, when you do the agenda, you've been sending it to us, but is it going on the website?
Yeah.
So there's just nothing there today?
Yeah, there was, there was nobody coming in for any particular reason. I think we just have a meeting to catch up where we're at. You know, we're at the end of the fiscal year.
But we had somebody going in.
No, well, we had two people come in and they both canceled out.
Okay.
But they never got to the agenda. I was gonna put, before I got them on the agenda, they both canceled out. That was the Bigelow Street.
Yeah.
And the West Street subdivision. Which is, which fell through the cracks and he's coming back now and starting all over.
Some research on that in three minutes.
Remember he's gonna build six homes, both of the railroad tracks.
Yeah.
He decided only build five because he didn't wanna go to four.
We that we only put the ones that he votes out to accept.
But he hasn't.
I think.
He's missed his deadline coming in again.
We have. I wondered what was going on though.
Yeah, but if you scanned it when you got home or whatever.
Yep.
And emailed it to us, then when we get to the next meeting, presumably everybody will read it and we can approve them. And then she gives me the.
You wanna be more official than we are.
Secret codes. I can even post it during the meeting.
Ah-ha, okay.
Figure out a way to make it effortless, relatively effortless.
You still have to show up though?
You have to show up to vote on them, yeah. But it only takes a majority, right? But you're gonna have to read your email to see, to read the minutes.
I've gotta set one up.
Thought you had one. You're sharing somebody else's, right?
My brother, my, uh, brother, my husband's.
Pet grands, right? Pet grands.
I haven't been able to access that one for years.
It's really one I have on for you.
Yeah.
I wonder why it keeps coming back.
Exactly.
I rushed back from New Jersey to do this.
No, I care for the kid. You can't be kidding. I care for the kid.
Did you? I, my nieces is here from Hawaii and I haven't seen her in six years. And the kids have gone from.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. That's what happens.
Her daughter. I think she'd make a good one for you. Her daughter dislikes her father so badly. Because he's a gorgon. And she, you know, is supposed to go visit him every two weeks. They live on the big island. So she applied to a single scholarship that's up in, for high school. Up in Waimea, up at the head of the island. They only give out one and she got it full boat.
Wow.
Just so she wouldn't have to go visit him. But that's a terrible place to be. His father's got loads of money and he blocks it all kinds of ways. Instead of saying, why don't you get straight?
It seems we have old articles that were passed the town meeting printing bylaws. Going back to fiscal year two thousand and nine. And say, you're really gonna use it? Oh, jeez.
I'm glad they made it across the new bridge a day early.
Which come out of here?
The new tap and sea.
Oh, the Mario Cuomo?
They had a huge fire exit accident on us today.
Oh, yeah?
They said it was backed up fourteen miles in each direction.
Seems like it's backed up a lot.
Well, you know what happened? Was a car that was disabled and a trailer truck ran over. And it burst into flames. So it killed somebody, so, you know, that takes a long time to get that.
They drove under a parking garage at the Southland Farm Mall with the horse trailer one day. And I'm just about that much too low.
Well, you did a star driver.
I kinda modified the trailer a little bit.
Hello, Louise, can you help us out? I have a printing of, of bylaws. I got several old articles here. And they're just hanging around. I don't know what, how, how much we got. Two thousand, two thousand, two thousand. And how much we spend on printing bylaws? Do you know?
We spend less than we used to when we used to charge everybody.
Yeah.
By the same token, I have town meetings. Articles have been submitted to the Attorney General. And I believe they have ninety days. And at the point they send it back, then I always.
Have to get it printed?
I have to reprint them immediately.
Well, we've got some old ones and I could keep a two thousand dollar one from fiscal year two thousand and fourteen. I'll get rid of the one through two thousand and nine and two thousand and eleven.
That's your committee's.
Won't cause you any problems.
That's, that's up to the committee.
Okay.
Why don't you have to pay it? Just because it's old?
No, we got the money sitting there. We're not, we're not spending it. And they want it back.
Oh, no.
Don't be long. Okay.
We got caught on a Jersey bike on Sunday afternoon because they had a white flight coming in.
Okay, I got a, I got three special article forms for, for printing bylaws. Fiscal year two thousand and nine, we have six hundred and thirty-three dollars and eleven cents left in that account. Fiscal year two thousand and eleven, we have two thousand dollars in the account left. Because that's all we got, so we never spent any of it. And we got fiscal year two thousand and fourteen, two thousand. So, I think we only need one.
Are we making a profit on these things at thirty-five and forty dollars a piece?
No.
But if they have to go to court, then basically have to buy a certified law.
Should make that like five hundred bucks.
A town isn't supposed to make a profit.
That's right.
You're supposed to cover your costs but not make a profit.
That's why you have so many people on the table.
Yeah, those two, those two men.
So you're making a motion?
I'm gonna make a motion. And anybody second that to get those two. All in favor of getting that money back?
Hi.
Let me sign it out.
So now that you've submitted the town meeting warrant results, are we gonna print this again?
You know the zoning article that you amended?
Yeah.
I, well, it was voted at town meeting. Then I have to compile it all and send it to the Attorney General. Along with changing the general bylaws from select men to board of.
Select board.
Select board or members of the select board. And there were about four other articles that had to go before the Attorney General. So they've been submitted. Now, at the point they approve it, if they approve it, then I have to reprint and I have about thirty reprinted at any time.
And then is our salary.
So anyways, after hitting this abutment with the, hitting the garage deck with my.
I'm sorry.
After hitting the garage deck with my horse trailer.
Yeah.
It was kinda damaged.
Yeah.
People would always, I'd go to some horse event and people would always ask me what happened to the trailer. I told them we were driving down the highway and a meteorite. People kinda didn't know what to think of that, you know, they chuckle or whatever.
Well, I were trying to move away from you gracefully.
So we were down in, I was down in the Newport area at this horse event. And someone came up and asked me, and I told them that story and they go, you know, when I was a kid in the Midwest, I get hit by one. It fell out of the sky and hit me on the shoulder.
Sure it wasn't ice chug from a toilet in a plane?
Yeah, it was true. Ooh, ice.
So yesterday I was down at the guy that fixes my truck and equipment and stuff on, across from the Dodge dealer.
Yeah.
And he comes rolling in with this trailer, fifty-three foot trailer. And the guy must have misjudged them and not noticed the height of whatever.
Whatever.
Same thing, the whole trailer was just.
At least it had a accordion look.
Was not pretty. And the truck was all geared up too, so it probably wasn't the first time. Put that in minutes, gave back a lot of money.
Yeah.
Forty-six hundred bucks.
I'll afford not to give it to us the next time.
Yeah. You got a budget, you're supposed to spend it.
That's the problem with government.
If it printed something else. Party invitation to, something.
Sweatshirts and hats.
So how do you scan them? How do you scan this? Get it out of your notebook or?
Right on the flatbed.
Right on the flatbed, yeah. Hit a button and email to us?
Uh, I have to scan them into a PDF. One extra step. It's not too bad. I'll do, I'll do these.
He's like a mailing list of us, yeah.
I have your email, I have his email, my email, it's him.
Right, you can make it into a group, right?
Yeah. I have a working email for you, that's all.
You don't?
Not a working one. If you wanna give it to me and I will tip. What Jay is saying is we wanna, do you wanna share your grand idea? So I don't take credit for it.
Um, we were talking a few weeks ago about posting the minutes on the website.
And then or not?
And we should probably read them before we vote to approve them.
That's true.
No, is it, is it, we haven't done that before.
We've never read them before we approve them.
They've never been posted.
I was suggesting that might be a more professional, modern thing to do now.
Well, we don't wanna look too professional.
I mean, the internet's kinda here to stay and email and all that stuff. Everything's been tested.
You know, back in the days when I worked, I was on commission picking, you know, systems to run a company.
Really? Did you pick the right one? Did you pick the right one?
I didn't pick IBM. They got you so mad at me, I'd say, answer the question, yes or no? Does your system do this? And they'd come into there and I'd say, yes or no? Neither does it. They used to get really irritated with me. But that was back in the days when IBM was running most of the informational things that everybody went to. And it was always three hundred guys and me.
Three hundred what?
Yeah, I said me. And when I didn't understand something, I'd ask a question and then all guys would say, oh, I'm so glad you asked it. How did you ask it?
Can we hang anything with POTUS? He wants, he wants to take some of his land in the chapter sixty-one. I don't think that's possible. Well, he sold, he sold his solar, he wants to take some of it.
I thought he wanted to just get rid of the right of first refusal instead of.
What's that?
Yeah, well, he wants, he wants to take it out of sixty-one. But usually when you take out a sixty-one, the town gets right of first refusal. Or first refusal if he takes out a sixty-one and sells it. And if he's not selling it.
Who's that?
POTUS.
He, wouldn't he have to take it out of sixty-one because it's going from a farming use to the solar farm?
Yeah, oh, that, that, but I think other land that he has there.
No, I don't, I don't think he wanted to touch that.
Well, that's what I, I gotta.
Doesn't have to do anything.
Oh, you think it's just for the solar farm? Because he wouldn't.
I believe so. If I think differently, I will let you know.
Better know soon because they're doing construction down there.
Yeah.
I live right up the street.
Yeah. About two hundred feet.
Just so it'll line so I didn't get notice.
You're on Randall or on Lancaster? You're on Randall or Lancaster?
I'm on Randall.
You met my new tenant yet? I mean, you know her, Donna.
Yeah, she, does she still work for the Town Bullets?
No, she's retired.
Oh, okay.
Who?
Donna Erickson.
Donna Erickson. She is renting this old St. John's house.
St. John's.
That Jay renovated.
The old what?
St. John's house.
You know about St. John?
Yeah.
She's a gardener, it's beautiful. She's a gardener, she's been working on the landscape, it's great.
Have you filled any of the others?
I've got two that we're almost done with, the Hills and the.
Manjum?
No, we're just working on that one. But the Hills is pretty much done and the Whales.
Okay.
We've got a lot of work outdoors to finish up there.
When else are we gonna do it tonight?
You gonna have?
Just go through the mail?
Go through the mail, all right.
Well, Ron took it all out and it's ogged out of his arms.
Yeah, I tried to balance this and all the mail and then the mail. And Enclosures got mixed up with the.
Is there anything left up in Tellon Hudson? It's all it calls.
They're gonna tear it down, aren't they? I think I ran one, so probably, probably would've set up, well, that's what I heard.
With the place on eighty-five between two ninety and the ninety-nine restaurant, you know, on the right side, that's, it's, it's still left.
What?
What do you mean fill it?
Which one is?
There's a commercial building.
Yeah.
That little stub of eighty-five between two ninety and Corn and where Wal-Mart, where Walgreens and ninety-nine and stuff are. There's a building that was put up a few years ago, it seems like it was sitting empty for a long time. But it looks like it's full now.
Oh, that's the one that's up, I thought, by the.
Truck, yeah.
I came at the new, the building.
That's an elderly place. That's an elderly place.
The one fifty-five. Where the, what was her name? Living, had a house for years and years. Well, the one they're building now in the corner. Oh, that's what it's gonna be. It's an
Yeah, you can see the signs up now.
Yeah.
Doesn't say fifty-five, shows people with gray hair.
I think that was Deli's. Didn't Deli develop that building, that commercial building? Deli?
Yes.
I don't think so. You think?
Yeah, I'm pretty sure it was.
Across the valley?
Uh, yeah.
He did the condos there.
Yeah.
Cause he gave the soccer field
Well, you're talking about that place. The place with the blue lights on the other side.
Yeah. Yeah.
You're right, though. It's not empty for a long time.
Does it sound familiar to you what's going on with, with Chris Slate?
Yeah, he came, Chris Slate came to the selectmen's meeting last night and he wanted to know if you were really meeting tonight. And I said, I think so, but I'm not sure. Because he wanted to know how, how you felt.
Why, what's he gonna do?
Yeah, I know, I know. It's not clear. He's selling the land or?
He's selling the project.
Oh.
Oh, he's selling the whole project?
Yes.
Okay.
Gee, that's unusual.
Well, he said he's seventy-five and, you know.
He's not gonna see
He's younger than I am. And younger than Ron by a lot.
Decades, right?
Yeah.
But anyway, um, to make a long story short, he wanted to know how the town wanted the agreement written.
Favorable to us.
What?
Favorable to us.
Yeah.
That's how we want it written.
Well, it's got the overlay district approved, approved, right?
Right.
Okay, so it's got the, so whoever buys it gets the old approved overlay district to go with it. Does it make any difference to us who owns it?
No.
It's the same as yours.
Yeah, that's how they flipped that one too.
What?
His place was, was committed and then flipped.
Yeah.
Then, um, Pulte built it.
Just as long as things don't fall through cracks.
Right.
We have a building inspector now?
No. No, we're still part-time work.
What?
Part-time.
Oh, part-time.
Part-time.
Well, through next May.
I'm deaf.
I'm sorry. Through what?
I believe next May.
Oh.
I was looking today, he didn't say anything, so.
I thought I updated my town offices list and I thought he went through May twenty-fourth. I wanna, I can sort of get everyone checked.
So this says the buyer is Berlin Crossing LLC. North Craft. Anybody know who that is?
I think the guy that bought the building down on River Road. No, he was Westbrook.
No, I don't think so.
I'm just
He would buy that, not what, if I could permit it that way.
Cause it has affordable units in it. I came by that accident yesterday in Marlborough.
Which one?
It was clearing, the one near Lakeside. Kinda looked like it was flattened and strewn out this way. It was really ugly. I'm, I'm surprised people survived it.
Two million dollars.
I know, saw that one night. Always have the land for twenty years, twenty-five years.
I couldn't figure out where it rolled over though. They said it rolled over twice, but I couldn't figure that out. I figured it must have hit the guardrail to the right of the road and flipped over.
Yeah. Where's the deal?
Mm-hmm. Cash. That's pretty special.
Wonder what it cost them to develop it.
I don't know. There's supposedly some lead up there and there's a ridge, like a seam of, um,
Where's that?
Ledge.
And a big one. We were just, you were just asking what we thought, what he thought, the development, how much it would be to develop it.
It's gonna be a little challenging. Depends on how much rock there is. No, this one's like, this one's a rock.
Oh, he's one giant rock.
Oh, yeah, it's one giant rock. That's why the road would have been easy peasy.
It's all brimmed.
Yeah, definitely. That's pretty good. That's pretty good. The, um, I don't wanna finance it.
Are we done?
Almost.
I've been digging down through my kitchen. I never should have started.
Should have left well enough alone.
Oh, my God. And all of a sudden Dennis has lost it, you know? Gonna start ripping up the floor this week. It's a crawl space, you know?
I've seen it, but not in singles. I've seen it in groups.
That should be interesting chunks.
I think. One day I looked over at the wall and I just had a guy take everything off of looking and I said, there's a hole this big here in the wall.
What happens if they get partway through it?
And then you look further and it's
And you could probably take it back.
On the side. Today, next day I came back, this is big. And the one on the side is, I think, I sent my cats wandering in and out of here. Never mind the squirrels.
They're financing ours. Chris is gonna finance it. So if they get partway through it, they'll finish it.
I think I've gotta rebuild that corner of it.
Is Dennis still there or? Oh, sorry. Open mouth inserts.
He did a lot of What's at the well?
His famous thing is, I'll do it sanity after next. I think that's the way he's gonna get better, sanity after next.
He's got the wells. He got the seven, two, I don't think he does. But, yeah, going through it, because it's public water supply, so running it through the state, it's a two-year process.
What's that process? I thought that's a million bucks or something.
No. No, yeah, your plants for water treatment is usually a million bucks a year. So depending on the well, depending on how you
I'll do the subjects. Sixteen, seventeen.
Yeah, that's probably a million bucks. Take a piece of your old paper. Color it with gray. Okay, gents.
All the water shut up in my kitchen. Everything's shut up because I've gotta work there.
Just information.
So I bought a
It's just for us.
Online I bought one of like a utility sink.
Oh, no, no.
I put it in the bathroom because then we can wash the dishes and that. That's enough.
I guess he didn't find a space to put it yet.
Oh, in the other room?
Yeah.
Sorry, interesting.
He walked that way, he didn't walk that way. Get this out of the, uh,
Are we all done?
Yeah, I just gotta put this away then.
Yeah.
Do you wanna close the meeting?
Yeah, make a motion, close it.
I make the motion, close the meeting.
Hey, get a second.
Second.
All favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.